Ms. Holder, present. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Ms. Ponce, here.
Okay, perfect. Everyone's here. Well, everyone please rise for the buzzer lead minutes. If you're eight. Okay. Do we have anyone sign up to speak this evening?
Yes, Meg Dungara has signed up to speak and she is online.
Okay, so Ms. Dungara, this is your virtual, so I'm muted and you're welcome to start speaking. Oh, she's on camera too, check it out. All right, do we have volume? Hold on, time out a second.
She's muted.
You're either muted or our volume isn't working.
Looks like she's muted.
Okay, I think we're good now, maybe.
We are.
No, can't hear you now.
It's in and out.
It's in and out.
I think it's done.
It's better. Hey Kurt, can you just give us a mic check real quick, please?
Kurt, can you hear me?
I... Can you...
Your sound goes in and out.
We can't hear you. You hear the first couple of words and then it comes out.
Ooh.
You heard that?
Heard that.
Well, maybe I'll just...
There you go.
Oh. Gotcha.
Not working. My phone doesn't work.
Perhaps come back to her.
Do we have the... Where's the extension for in here? We call her.
Please.
Oh, he's gonna leave her in joint. Well, while that's happening, it's a little out of the ordinary, why don't we take a look at the meeting... First of all, I need to... I need a motion to amend the agenda. Acting Village Manager Lisa has asked us to remove item A from the agenda, it's not ready at the current time. So, can I have a motion to amend the agenda point A?
Second.
Questions, comments? We'll call both, please.
Why are we not paying the black topic?
So, we found out after the agenda was in process, we'll say, not exactly finalized, but in process, that there's a resident on Julie Lane that had a bush that was damaged by the payers. And somebody on site at the time the paving was done last year agreed that they were responsible and would replace the bush. So, the bush is dead and this is our only leverage against actually getting them to perform. So, we're just gonna hold off for two weeks and we will bring this back, assuming that we've got residents in the situation. So, we'll try and help our residents.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, I have first and second. I have questions or comments, any other questions? Move to the agenda.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Ponce, Janie. Hi. Ms. Holder. Hi. Motion passed. Five, one yes.
Okay, do we have sound now?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, the other option is I could turn off this speaker, but then you can't see my face. So, up to you what you would like to do.
No, you're good. Can we have some more volume in here? You're good. We're gonna turn up our TV so we can hear you.
Okay, hi, my name is Meg and I am a resident here in Hampshire, obviously. And I guess I would like to start off by first thing, I applaud all of you on the board for passing the recent ordinance allowing residential chickens. And thanks for letting me come and speak tonight. And I'm hoping to kind of offer an alternative perspective on the current restrictions. The first point, I guess I'm interested in bringing up is the six-foot height requirement. It is something that is not common, listed in any other ordinances for that. And that prefabricated chicken runs or chicken coops are six feet and five inches or six feet and eight inches in height. So, the current restriction of six feet would require residents to custom build one. And there are, you know, ones that are available that are three or four feet high, but that makes availability for going in for cleaning or for children to go in there and hang out with chickens. So, I'm just wondering if that would be something that you guys would be interested in revisiting to make it kind of a seven-foot height requirement or even six-eight. That way, it could accommodate the mass prefabricated options that are in existence. So, that's kind of my first point. And then the other one is something that I've talked to a couple of you about, but just with all the projected village growth that's coming in and all the, you know, families that live here in town. I mean, you guys are anticipated to grow by 20,000 new residents by 2030. And, you know, the median age in town is 33 to 37 years old. So, most people, you know, are coming and moving to Hampshire because they have a desire to raise their kids here and have a rural culture and a rural environment. There was a Forbes study that was done and 77% of households under the age of 50 have a desire to live a more sustainable lifestyle. And with that comes backyard chickens. And so many people are choosing to have backyard chickens because they wish to practice a more sustainable lifestyle. And I think as the current ordinance is written, I think it was a really kind of missed opportunity from the village to kind of take a standpoint of embracing, you know, sustainability movements and things that exist in other municipalities in regards to the visibility screening. I think that requiring a screening kind of sends the opposite message. It's a missed educational opportunity for families, for neighbors, for residents, for everything like that. You know, it's a very sustainable practice. So, households are able to, you know, have their food scraps to feed the chickens and then the chicken waste is able to be used for, you know, gardens and around trees and for plantings and stuff. Linda can testify. My kids and I were literally there in the pouring rain at 6:30 in the morning, the Monday after the ordinance passed. We were beyond ecstatic that you guys have finally allowed chickens and it was so cool. And it went from kind of this big hype even in town with many people and then the restrictions were kind of re-clarified in regards to this visibility. And my son is eight and when I had to explain why we were delaying getting our coop because of the visibility screening, he looked at me and he said, "Are we not normal?" And it really got me thinking, this is sending the opposite message. Backyard chickens are something that should be very, you know, sustainable and allowing you to provide your own family nutrition and something that is an educational opportunity for a lot of people. And it's something that we're being asked to hide away versus something that we should maybe be viewing as an educational opportunity for many other people. You know, chickens aren't something that's private. It's not something that we should be sending a message, you know, that it's embarrassing or bad or not normal and something to hide away. I mean, they're living creatures and so, you know, many people adopt them as pets and we're kind of saying, "Well, you have to hide them away from everybody." And I think that's just really... It's just really sending the wrong message. And I think it's very opposite of the motivation for people who desire to have, you know, chickens. There's no other residential screening requirements to my due diligence. Everything else was kind of commercial or business-based. I mean, people don't have to hide their pools or sheds or fire pits or trampolines or parks or you can have a rabbit hutch and no one hides that and, you know, a dog run and no one hides that. Or people can have aviaries for, you know, their parrots or any other domesticated birds. You know, our family moved out here because we wanted to embrace, you know, the urban... We wanted to leave the urban behind and went to embrace more of the rural and the openness out here. And I just think it's, you know, kind of missed. And there's a huge push for sustainability and I know that's one thing that I had discussed that I think that really this could be kind of spun in a village way that, you know, we want to empower our residents to make more sustainable choices. My family and I are actually restoring our property to native everything. I mean, we don't have to hide our rain barrels or our compost bin or our expansive vegetable gardens or native plantings or pollinator gardens or, you know, things that may be socially viewed as, you know, uncommon, but we don't have to hide them away. So, I think it's just kind of missed. I mean, 54% of middle-class families right now are even financially struggling with the inflation. I mean, gas is up 50%, electricity is up 12%, natural gas 30.2%, water 3.6%, diapers 22%. I have one in diapers still. Groceries are up, you know, 11.9%, insurance costs are up 6.5%. I think, you know, in good conscience, it's very difficult as a resident to have the village asking us to do something that's very cost prohibitive of something that is of a desire to be more sustainable and provide for our family and teach our kids, you know, values and instill in them the importance of living, sustainability, especially during an inflation. I mean, egg prices alone have gone up 32.2% in the last year. They were scarce to find during COVID. Burlington, Hampshire Food Pantry, they are in desiring eggs and actually I've spoken to them before.
I know that we're remote, so I'm trying to talk over you, I apologize. We do have a five-minute time limit for a couple of comments. I will let you finish if you're going to wrap up shortly so that we can continue with the rest of the meeting. I'm not finales to you, but we do have to keep the meeting moving.
Sure, sorry, it's hard to hear you, so you're kind of looking at my ear, sorry.
No, I know, and that's why I don't want to start banging the gavel because I know it's hard to hear remote. So, I don't want you to take it the wrong way, but we do have to keep this moving.
Sure, sure, okay. Well, just going back to the food pantry thing real quick, I mean, we can set up a program with them. I've already talked to them to be able to give families who have extra eggs to them to help. I mean, my lot alone is three-quarters of an acre and I would have to block out six neighbors. It's just creating a division in a community. Kids run freely between the yards and my neighbors are all excited to have chickens. And so, I guess at the end of the day, I'll just kind of recap in saying, I just don't think that it's something that was maybe thought of from a sustainability standpoint and I would really implore the board to view it that way and make a stance that, you know, chickens are okay to be normalized. And, you know, we're gonna embrace the henpeck heritage and the rural community and sustainability and families who are financially struggling and who want to provide their own food and educational opportunities and everything like that. The library wants to get involved, the Conservation Foundation wants to get involved, University of Illinois King County wants to get involved. I think this could really be a great way to bring the community together instead of requesting us to kind of divide ourselves by hiding away something that is quite sustainable and hopefully more normalized. So, that's...
I appreciate you. Again, I don't mean to cut you off, but we do have to kind of keep things moving along. You're welcome to stay on the rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No issue.
Does the board want to discuss this now or discuss it later and have any questions?
No, I just want to say, I think on point one, my understanding is it's a minimum of six feet, not just six feet. So, if it's a six-foot coop or a six-foot eight coop or a seven-foot coop, that's fine. I thought it was a minimum of six.
So, she's speaking about two different things. The first is the height of the pen that the chickens can run on and that has a maximum of six feet tall. The screening requirement, which could be a little fencing, it would allow...
Six feet.
Yeah. The pen itself and where the coop's at, maximum.
Didn't we talk about that, that somebody looked at the coops and the average size over-the-counter chicken coop was six foot five or something?
I don't know if we reported an average size, but there are many that are well under six feet and there are also many of a kind of a different design and style that are meant to be walk-in and those are over six feet.
Sure, so I've done a lot of research in this as well and there's a lot of options out there under six feet as well as many options above our ordinance, just mess by six. So, again, we talked about this as being a pilot, right? We knew this going into it and we knew that there would be things to address. So, my recommendation, we can certainly dialogue in this format, but to kind of keep the meeting moving, but you guys sit on it for a little bit, we can bring it up under new business, talk about it a little further, we can test the board's desire. Okay, I'm not trying to quash this, but I'd like to keep this moving a little bit. Okay, so take note during the course of the meeting, take notes or whatever, we'll come back to it. Okay?
If I could point out too, though, we can't take any action tonight anyway.
Correct.
Because it's not on the agenda, just so that our citizens are aware of that.
Correct. All right, so, thank you. Again, you're welcome to stay on. We're gonna discuss this under new business, okay? But again, we can't take any new action, we can't take any action against it because there's no... We can't take vote on something that's not on the agenda, it's just a process. All right, so with that, the meeting minutes from June 16, 2022 are in front of you at this time. Please review them for any additions, deletions and/or corrections.
To have one scriptener's error in the very first paragraph, it just has to be, June 2nd has to be changed to June 16.
Any other?
I have three requested changes. So, page... Page four of the packet, under Village Managers Report, a motion for the facade. The sentence that says, "Trustee Kelly first explained that you will be abstaining from all facade grant votes." It's that I felt that my vote is included, not invaded, through the BDC.
Sometimes it is.
Just throwing that out there. And then, under monthly, or sorry, not monthly reports, on page 10. Yeah, sorry. Under Committee Reports, page nine. Under Committee...
It's on 10.
10. I was... Under BDC Committee Reports, President Reed actually also thanked the Beautification Committee for coming. I remember that because I thought he was meaning Chairman Kurejki and Swallow and the fact there were members of the Beautification Committee here that he was thanking.
So, just, I would recommend that we just change the minutes to reflect that I thank the members of the BDC and Beautification Committee members attending. Because I don't remember. I think almost all of the beautification members were there. Change it to that. That's enough.
Sorry, two more, I've got three before. Under our... The copious notes on our discussion of violence. In here it says that I noted that I like to think about root cause and that I view incidents like Uvalde as the result of the cause. And that's not what I said. I did say I'm interested in the root cause that's doing this, but that I feel the conversation was more around what could be the root cause that leads to heinous acts like Uvalde. So, I don't want it to appear as though I was minimizing what was happening because that's not what I was saying. And it kind of comes off on this. And I just wonder, when we have long discussions like this and we start to paraphrase what people said, does that make sense or should we say something in notes like, "There was a discussion"? Because everything is recorded and somebody can watch verbatim what was said. Should we just say something to the effect of, "There was a lengthy discussion amongst the board of possibilities"?
Did I say something?
Absolutely.
As the village clerk. On these minutes, it should be just discussion was taken and just the motions of what happened. We know this. These are becoming books. And what's gonna happen is exactly what you said, verbatim, and then when you run for election again, suddenly you can come back and say, "Well, you said this. I'm not voting for you."
Well, and the whole election conversation is not something that...
I just want to make sure that anybody's discussion on something that's, especially a topic like that, if we're going to say what somebody said, we should say what was said or don't paraphrase.
It's difficult.
Yeah, totally.
We kind of started taking more detailed minutes a year and a half ago and kind of increased because it seemed like the board liked that extra detail, but I wholly understand your point.
So, I think...
And I understand the paraphrase approach, it's just sometimes then it can show a different context than what was said in the meeting. So, that was one of them. And then my final one, I'll move on from that. My final one was on the... At the end, under other, where it says, "Trustee Kelly asked the village if the village could reach out to the owners of the mall on 72 to get the COVID testing container removed." I actually asked if there's anything the village could do to help them because they had come in and it was a topic that we had talked about previously. It wasn't like asking them to have it removed, but is there something we can do to help them? Because we knew that they were having issues with the owners of that business.
Got it.
That's all that changes. Could I just ask the board if you want for discussion, paraphrase, or if you would like to just make that single change in Trustee's comment?
My two favorite words are discussion ensued and keeping it simple. And yeah, what the topic, I mean personally, is what the topic was, that it was a broad range of discussion on it because it was a lengthier and you could say for 15 minutes, 10 minutes, I mean, so that they understand it's a longer one. But otherwise, I'm wholeheartedly with it and it's so much extra work for you and I thought you guys wanted.
No, I think we like the detail when it comes to like motions and reasons why votes were taken and what, you know... But I think that there's a level of detail that needs to happen when there's action items that happen, but when we're just generally talking about a discussion or interacting as a board, I think some of that stuff should be taken out of context. So, I think that the detail is good, asterisks in some instances because when you look back at minutes, years later, it's important to know how decisions or votes were taken or the reasons why somebody did.
Well, we have available the video, so if somebody wanted to listen in on the discussion and see points of view or get details about it, it is available, so it's not that we're not being transparent with the community.
I don't know how we address this. I think that we need to clean this up as best we can because it's already been published in the packet. There's no way to take this back because we've already posted this. So, I'm not... I don't want to give the appearance of we make a motion to amend the minutes or remove that discussion.
No, I'm just asking that my amendment to what was in here was that it's not that I view incidents like Uvalde as a result of the cause. Because that wasn't what I was saying.
But in the future, when the board is just generally discussing, I would think that we could just cover it with discuss at length or something.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, I agree.
Is the board comfortable with that moving forward, like when we're discussing?
Clarify my understanding. For example, on page 10 of the packet, for example, just above the Committee or Commissioner reports, this depth of minute-taking good?
I like the motion to approve regular accounts payable.
Uh, in that section, yes, where the questions were asked and we repeat what the questions were. Good?
I don't think we need it personally. I mean, we're looking for clarification for us before we vote on it, but I don't, there was no motion or anything, so...
There was really no action taken, but, you know, because this is regular mundane approval stuff, right? But as we get into, as we get into, this was a bad representation, right? But I take that back, like an ordinance granting the variance, right? Where it talks about Road Runner and then Trustee Kelly mentioned about the amendments and, you know, that we didn't amend the code. I think that that stuff is kind of... That stuff is important because, you know, it shows that we recognize that there's some kind of issue and we also gave an action item to say that staff needs to look into this so that we can change this moving forward. But again, that's changed, that's something I don't... You know, you've got more of a legal mind than I do. I feel like that kind of stuff is okay, not the discussion stuff.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. As for the page 10, as you said, motion to approve the accounts payable. If somebody raised a question that found an error, that something was wrong, you know, or was misnumbered or was a wrong amount or it's something that needed to be withheld for another meeting, that should go in because then something was removed or corrected in the packet. Other than that, I think our questions, I think it helps us and helps the public that's present, but I don't think we need to put in the minutes.
And again, the recording is present, like we do keep recordings and they're available for review. But I look at it from, like, we tried to go back into minutes, like, okay, we've had it both ways. Where we've had meetings where the minutes were not detailed enough, so we go back and we look at many minutes.
And that's the middle ground I'm trying to figure out, right? If all you say is motion per second votes, there was discussion, discussion ensued, then as a citizen, I'd be like, well... Now, I can go watch the video and I can see the discussion, so I guess that exists. But I personally don't have a problem with some information that's in there. I just don't think that we need to worry about doing verbatim what we talk about in long discussions. Like, we're doing a budget discussion. We're in that process and it ends up being a 40... We've been in some discussions where it's like a 45-minute discussion and you're not gonna put the whole thing in there, but you're probably gonna put, like, I've seen you do like main topics that were brought up. I don't know, I look to you as village clerk, what is the right, what isn't the right amount?
This is excessive. Very excessive. 10 pages.
Without losing...
Well, like he said, when you talk about something, discussion, discussion of this, discussion of this. But if there's a question about a motion, definitely, you know, yeah. Because you are talking about something that you're gonna be voting on, you know. But if it's a discussion about the return, whatever, or something that's been coined, what, you know, we talked about this and, you know, the consensus was of the board, let's continue discussion.
So, like, when we didn't vote on chickens, but we had a discussion about it to talk about, would we be interested, what are our feelings? What's the research? There's no motion or no anything. In that case, you're saying there was a discussion about this where evidence was considered?
Yes.
And it was asked to follow up in the next meeting. Got you, okay.
Is the board comfortable with kind of exploring this minutes process? You know, it may not be right the next time, it may be right or it may be not. I think that we, as long as we all engage, as long as we all engage with staff and the guy, I think we can do this. And again, to your point, it's not about not being transparent, it's not about any of that stuff because we are keeping record of it, it's all viewable. But at the end of the day, having stuff written or captured incorrectly is probably not for the best. So, especially when the recording doesn't catch up with the... Okay, so with the changes that are presented, are there any more changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 16, 2022. I apologize for letting you all take a little...
We've had the discussion that long about the minutes. Discussion about the minutes.
Mr. Ray's got his handcuffs off because Mr. Hedges is on vacation, so he doesn't worry about getting hit by him.
Don't put that in the minutes.
Okay, now it's time for the Acting Village Manager Report.
Hey, wait a minute, vote call.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I got all this time.
Put that in the minutes.
Call the votes, right?
Ms. Holder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Ponce, Janie. Hi. Motion passed. Five, one yes.
Is everybody happy that they got to vote now?
Yes.
All right, good. Now, acting village manager. Acting Village Manager Alliance.
So, before you, this evening, you have a motion to approve the second pay estimate to Alliance contractors for the streetscape project in the amount of $311,006.24.
Anyone have any questions about that? Seems pretty straightforward. You can see the work that's being done outside. It looks like the creek goes almost all the way across in most parts.
I was surprised after all the rain we had that night. I took my son to school and on the way, it was already pouring concrete the next morning. So, it rained that well that they were ready for concrete, forces water away too. So, I was like, that's amazing. That's great.
I do have one question.
Sure.
And it actually falls on page 22 and then in a larger print on page 26. But it's the line item for number 33, detectable warnings. And I was just curious as to what detectable warnings was.
Kurt?
Detectable warnings?
Yes.
Are the...
Are are the uh typically the red brick colored dimpled squares you see for ADA ramps. That are at sidewalk ramps at the entrances across the streets.
Okay.
So detectable warnings essentially is is imagine somebody in a wheelchair that comes up to the street and isn't really looking maybe. And they oh, they can feel it, or someone that maybe doesn't have their sight and has a walking stick and they can feel the. The ridges to know that they're at a at a crossing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions about the motion uh or the potential motion for the payment to the line contractor? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to authorize a pay estimate number two to Alliance contract.
So.
Questions, comments? We'll call.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Miss Ponce, Jenny.
Hi.
Miss Holder.
Hi.
Mister Kelly.
Aye.
Mister Coe.
Aye.
We should pass five, one yes.
Okay. Next, uh next you will see a motion to authorize change order number one and a payment to Alliance contractor in the amount of hundred and five thousand, six hundred and six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um I can't speak to exactly what all of this is for, but I can speak to, I can speak to a lot of it. I mean, but we talked to um, we talked to the board, right, of the things that we found during the car during the construction with additional valves. And shutting off water and water not being shut off and and all that kind of like stuff that we knew that we were going to find underneath the the street. But I know there was a few insertion valves that had to go on, um one of which uh caused a pretty significant flood downtown. Uh that was exciting. I know that the staff has really taken time out of their, you know, normal jobs to learn. The lay of the land and we're gonna have really good drawings, I'm told, after the end of it. Mister Ray has been involved, this Lions has been involved. Um we initially thought that, you know, when we first talked, the last time we talked about these change orders, it was upwards of sixty thousand dollars. And I I warned the board at that time that it was probably going to go up.
That'd like DEI, give us some explanation.
Sure. With DEI, are are you are you prepared to talk about some of the change orders at all or?
The details are on page thirty-two, so you know how that was to go.
Isolation of twelve inch water main.
Well, if you want, I can kind of go through the various uh extras that are on the list on page thirty-two of your packet and I can kind of talk about them. Or if you want, if you have specific questions about about any of those items, I can go into detail. Which would you prefer?
All I have is two, three and four.
Does anybody have any reason for him to go through the entire list or do you just want, why don't you just adjust the questions?
Okay. Two, three and four, you want me to explain?
Please.
All right, so number two, the additional storm sewer installation. This was essentially uh the the storm sewers that were proposed in the street. Had crossings of existing utilities. Now, there is a a massive AT&T duct. That would only have been known if we would have been able to, let's say, dig a. Uh two foot by two foot hole in the middle of the street and dig all the way down and find out, you know, six feet down where this thing really is. And we found out that there were actually three various size boxes, um concrete encased. And just very difficult to get around and the elevations of the storm sewer were at the point where they were in conflict. And the solution was to be able to put the pipes between the the runs. And which required uh extensions of the barrel sections. And that's where those items of a two foot barrel sections added. And three foot barrel sections added on the four different structures that were in within the street. And the spoils removal and trench backfill are the additional amounts of excavation that were required to go down deeper into the street. Questions on that one?
Number three.
Number three, this is the twelve inch insertion valves that were needed on both ends of the project to isolate the twelve inch main. This was a very long process with uh the uh village water department uh to. Research various areas of those, the the village to find where we could possibly turn this system off. And after very exhaustive process of trying to figure out that. That uh the valves that were there that we could shut off or the valves we were able to shut off. Did not shut the water down. The only choice was to add in a twelve inch insertion valves at both ends of the project to actually shut the water main off. Uh looking back to water main revisions that were done around fifteen years ago at Washington, that was done by a pressure connection. And then the twelve inch water main that was put in uh along that stretch of State Street. And this was back in uh around the early nineties, I believe, or eighty-nine, so over thirty years ago. And talking with the old public works director, uh getting some information about that, that uh. Or actually the water, water director, I guess, water superintendent, that uh they pretty much had to shut down like half the city. Or half the village to get it to to shut down. And you know, we we are, there's no way. That we were gonna probably get to that point to shut the the water tower off and shut all these, all these uh streets off for, you know. Six to twelve blocks in every direction to shut this off was just, it it, we didn't know if it was truly gonna work. So it ended up being the the best solution to put in these new insertion valves. And when they were put in and they worked, we knew one thing, the two valves that are at Washington. Or sorry, at Jefferson and State and uh up at, I believe it's just north of the tracks at Mill and State. Those two valves probably don't work. Um they're thirty-year-old valves and that's just, that's just kind of where we're at right now. Now we have valves that work. And it's kind of the same situation for number four as well.
Are you, are you, are you comfortable with the explanation?
Absolutely.
Any other questions about change orders presented?
I I just have one question, uh this is one of the first change orders I've looked at. When I look at the the unit and the quantity and unit price. When they say like sewer crew, is that a variable amount of people? Because the unit price per hour is different. While the extra line item is still titled as sewer crew and I'm not including the OT, the overtime. So in one instance, it's fifteen hundred, forty-five dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. In another instance, it's eleven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Five cents an hour, so just trying to understand the variance with the same line item. Like it just means there's different numbers of people. That's the one.
Well, technically, that's not the one. I I could add something in there uh more descriptive on that. The sewer crew line item that's up on number one, that is the sewer crew line item on their hourly price for their crews. That includes uh equipment uh as a favor to the village based on the amount of excess. Uh issues we had with the water leaks and trying to figure out what was going on in in the intersection of Jefferson between the six inch. And even the twelve inch, what uh what a what Alliance and uh Lenny Hoffman, who is the excavator. Worked out with the villages that they were going to say, hey, we still need to pay our guys, but we will uh reduce our hourly cost down. For those sewer crews to eliminate the equipment costs.
Gotcha, okay, so the sewer crew isn't necessarily, it's more of a catch-all for the people and the equipment taking place on that line.
It is, but the water main shutdown issues that you had on number six, the reason why that sewer crew I line item. And even the overtime line item is reduced by a certain amount is because there's no equipment charges in those, those hourly charges.
Okay, and then on that one, on six, we had our own public work or water, like Mark and the team were on site for that the entire time as well, correct?
Uh maybe not the entire time, but probably a lot of the time, yes.
That's the one that caused an issue with the water tower.
I'm not sure if it, that's exactly the one, but there were a couple instances where the water tower was affected and even other various instances. And like I said, this is a very widespread issue around, you know, the village downtown area. Um being a s- a a large main and, you know, directly connected to the water tower, so. Um very sensitive when you talk about older infrastructure and shutting things on and off. And that's one other big reason why we decided it was probably best not to go any further with shutting things down is that uh. We may harm more than we want to.
And you know, this is something when we approved the streetscape project that we knew was gonna happen, right? You never, you never wanted to happen, but you're tearing a street that hasn't seen the light of day in sixty years. You know, I don't think that we've done this extensive of a project downtown in many years, probably since they put down the original cobblestone. I don't, I may be being facetious, but I know that they've been pouring their life and their heart, soul and this at staff level. And um they don't bring this stuff to you lightly, that's for sure.
Okay, one, just one point of clarification. And I I just understand this is, this is change order one.
Right.
And and if I recall, then it's it's up to about a hundred and forty thousand, so that change order two is gonna take the rest of it.
Change order two, I think, covers the engineering services for the original change order. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
So that would bring it up to the one hundred and forty thousand that we talked about with change order.
Where did we?
And I think the one forty-one or what the hundred and forty thousand dollars that you're talking about was um sent to you. Uh and Mike, just kind of summarizing when you answered questions about, oh, you know, what all the changes were. So there are um, there are additional amounts um that we haven't seen yet, like we're doing some work on the clock.
Okay.
Um we're ordering the medallion, we're, it's gonna be put in the cement, you know, some extra things. So we try to be as inclusive on all the amounts that we were known to us at the time, so that's what they're.
So see, it's the the expectation as to what it's gonna be, this is what's given.
It, you know, so this is still a ongoing project, so please be cautious to say, you know, like a hundred and forty. Yeah, I'm not comfortable with even saying that. It's okay, because um I discovered an additional, discovered, not discovered, but. Um you know, recorded an additional twenty-seven hundred dollars today on additional things that have, you know.
So it's fluid, it's gonna keep changing. But at this point, a hundred and five thousand, six oh six ninety-eight is what's stung. Uh yes, absolutely. Yes, for construction.
Not, and then the additional thirteen thousand dollars for engineering services that result.
That's the second.
On on that total, the hundred and five thousand, six oh six ninety-eight, when I look at the change order details, the change order one total is a hundred and seventeen thousand. Three forty-one, nine, and it says deduct retainage ten percent. Are we going to have to come back to pay that ten percent later so the actual change order, should we be approving an actual change order of a hundred and seventeen thousand? Three forty-one?
Um we're actually, uh that's a very good point. We're we're approving the payments, but. Letting me know that it, we do have the retainage and we will be asked to pay that estimate as well.
Okay, so so this motion that we're being asked on is just to approve a payment towards change order one of a hundred and five. But the actual change order amount is a hundred and seventeen thousand, three forty-one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the the retainage will be paid at a later date once we get past the warranty period.
That's where we do like on other developments where they hit a certain period of.
Yep.
Sam.
Yep, so there's a, there's gonna be a ten percent retainage on the entire job. Uh the original contract amount is still not even a set amount because we still go through and we track the quantities on all the project items. So there may be some items that go over, there may be some items that go under, there may be some items that don't get done. So the true value of the contract may not be that, it may be less or maybe more. It's one of those things we just don't know until it's done.
Thank you.
In other words, fair.
Yes.
So yeah, I just want to make sure I was understanding the numbers. Okay, so with that, um we're talking change orders and we have um. Uh Mister Pulsing on the line here, does anybody have any questions about the almost thirteen thousand dollars for change order number two? As long as we're discussing where the dollars are going in that, I will, I will call the vote separately for each item, but we're in the heat of a discussion, I don't want to break.
No, engineering.
Okay.
President Reed, it's Mister Detman on the line, by the way.
Well, I'm, I'm losing my mind, I apologize.
That's okay.
Um so with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize change order number one and the payment toward the amount. Is that the correct language? Okay, um in a hundred and five thousand, six oh six ninety-eight. Questions, comments? Uh we'll call, please.
Miss Ponce, Jenny.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Mister Coe.
Aye.
Mister Kelly.
Aye.
Miss Holder. We should pass five, one yes.
Thank you. And uh since we didn't have any discussion about the second amount, um I will uh entertain a motion to authorize change order number two. And the payment uh towards additional engineering services for the streetscape project in the amount twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and.
So. Sorry.
Questions, comments? We'll call, please, Mister Clark.
Mister Kelly.
Aye.
Mister Coe.
Aye.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Miss Ponce, Jenny.
Hi.
Miss Holder.
All right.
We should pass five, one yes.
Okay, so we uh uh pass this resolution every year, re-adopting the governmental agreement between county for animal control services. Um it's routine, uh just it adopts their twenty twenty-two fee when somebody calls for animal control. Um we will monitor the animals and that kind of thing. Uh the village does a bill for that, the amounts in your packet. And I will entertain any questions you have about that at this time.
I have two.
Sure.
The first one is, and just out of curiosity, why is it just dogs and not cats?
Um you know, I think, I, we asked about this question and I don't know if you're back, but I think cats are a protected class. I know, I, no, I really, I really think, I think that they are and that's why they're not on here, because we've had that where they got under people's decks and they called the police. Wish there was a gentleman.
A lot of feral cats and it's really hard to, they're looking to uh to charge the homeowner. Obviously to recoup some of their costs. They do take care of, like if if we, uh if somebody is uh. Evicted from a house, they they will take a cat and and, you know, for safekeeping, but they won't deal. With any wild cats uh or wild animals, actually. And it's hard to determine if there's a cat running around, if it's a feral cat or if it's owned by somebody, right?
No, I get, I get it. It just seems so specific to dogs and there's all these cats running around too, so I.
Right.
There's, there's a reason for that, because we had a gentleman not too long ago that used to call the police all the time because he was underneath the deck. The cats were underneath the deck and King County Animal Control wouldn't do anything about it. They wanted our cops to go underneath their deck. So we don't have cat group uniforms, so we didn't do any of that. So anyhow, then any other, any other questions?
My second, my second one then is just the recouping of fees then. So the village gets um billed then by the county. And then we pay them, but then do we go back to the owner if the owner's found and and?
We don't get billed right away. They'll hold on to the the dog for the tens, ten days. Or how however many days before they euthanize it or whatever, then we get the bill if nobody claims it.
Okay, but if it's claimed then, then they get the bill?
Correct, the owners do, right, right. They're the only game in town. I, there is nobody that comes out and offers the service, so we're kind of.
I mean, no, I have no.
You guys spare time.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify because I just didn't know and I don't have pets, so. But thank you.
Well, that's why it's so important to have your cat for the odd shift.
Chip, micro-stated neutered kiss, now you're like Bob Barker, right? All right, um with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh resolution twenty-two dash oh eight. Uh re-adopting the IGA with King County for animal control services.
So vote.
And first. Somebody, anybody? Thank you, thank you. Okay, questions, comments? Okay, Miss Clark.
Mister Coe.
Aye.
Mister Kelly.
Aye.
Miss Holder.
Hi.
Miss Ponce, Jenny.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Mister Ray.
Thank you, Mister, President Reed. Uh building reports in front of you, there's several metrics listed. Uh I'll just note that housing permits are up right now, which is a good thing. Most of those are in Thames Farm. Uh I drove through there today and there's somebody living in Thames Farm already, so.
They closed a couple of weeks ago.
Second closing is tomorrow.
Yeah, so that's rolling right along, uh extremely busy month, number of inspections, three hundred and forty-three, that's a lot. Um for any move, uh but we are keeping up, I will say, you know, plan review is still at two point four days, which is. Uh well under the contracted time of five. contracted time of five days for residential permits and ten for commercials, so. Uh, the department's doing a really good job, we hacked up the code enforcement game a bit, and are having meetings with, uh, certain property owners to get their violations corrected, so that's also moving along. Happy to answer any questions.
For the Crown Development, where the new school is, has there been any talk about them breaking ground for homes in there at any point in the near future?
I can speak to, I can speak to that. Um, there are conversations going on, uh, about selling of the lots with different developers, different, like, you know, home builders, but as of now, they're starting. But they're working, you know, their priority was the school in the crosswalk and getting that open, and they're actively marketing the land, but there's nobody that's signed up, not wanting to get to my house. But they are having very positive conversations with several builders in the area that may or may not be building in the village at the current time. So, but again, that would be, I, I only say this because we're on record, right? So that, that private company owns still all of the land, and so any deal that would be made with them um, would be a private business deal, the village wouldn't have any to do with it.
Totally understood, but usually, the village is aware, and the developer's looking to start.
We know they've talked, the company's made an agreement.
Okay, any other questions about the reports?
Can I ask a question on page fifty? Please, on the water loss percentage.
Oh, yeah.
Is part of the reason for that recent micro spike because of our construction?
This is for data from, uh, March and April, so this is previous. Uh, I don't know, I assume we'll see maybe a little spike.
Well, we could see a potentially giant spike.
Okay.
We lost eight point three million gallons in March and April?
Uh, Ms. Science, Ms. Science, we, we did that study years ago, right? And we, we did it again, we put it in the budget again this year for the water loss report, right?
I think it's over two years now.
You're talking about the, um.
With the detection. Yeah, is that this year?
It's every other year.
Was that, was that this year, is that next year?
Uh.
Or last year, so.
We did it last year, so it won't be until next year.
So, I mean, we, we gradually worked in the last, how many, how many times have we done that?
It's only been twice, so.
Twice.
It's been last quarter.
You'll remember the budget process, and we, maybe you guys won't, you don't, because you, some of you weren't here, but we actually, in company, to come in and evaluate our water system every couple of years, and then they take this data, because obviously you've got leaks, right? Because you know how much water you retreat, and then you know how much money, you know, how much you bill for, right? So what they do is they go around and they go, they evaluate the whole water system, and they detect leaks. And so what they've done, like, the Latin, the big one I remember was up in Lakewood. We dug up that poor guy's driveway.
Twice.
Twice, and, uh, and what happens is, is that the lines expand or crack, or fittings pop and that kind of stuff, and where they can water in the ground. And so what they're able to do is tell you, hey, you're leaking here, and then we can make a judgment as how much water we think we're actually losing there, based on their information, and we fix it. And so I, I forget what the numbers were the first time we did it, but it was dramatic. That the first, the first time we did a water detection, or leak detection thing, uh, was on, it was, it was dramatic. Now.
They found a, they found a hydrant behind Pet A that's been running for years, for years.
And then, you know, with that, did we have, like, a company that had some kind of water main or water service or something that we thought was shut off or something? Is that my accurate?
Um, we have found two unmeasured services during this process, um, as well as detecting leaks.
So.
It becomes less and less, um, dramatic, because we found the big ones, and, you know, unless it happens again, you know, we're not seeing giant ones, but, yeah, we're trying to hone in on it.
I forget what the average is, but there's an average that we try to shoot for, right?
About the, the standard for, like, communities on Lake Michigan water is ten percent loss. Sure, that is extremely difficult to get to, and there comes a point where, say, you're fifteen percent, getting that last five percent can cost a lot of money. So, um, I think our goal right now is to get consistently about twenty or below, but, uh, Mark, Mark didn't have any special concerns about this report, uh, in particular, not a special events or reason, so.
And staff has been really good about, I know, since in the last few years, about identifying aged water meters, especially for, like, industrial appliances, where the, you see people posting online all the time, and they go, oh, my water bill's really high, there must be something wrong with my meter. Well, if there's something wrong with your meter, you're gonna be billed less, because they wear out. They don't wear, there, there's no possible way for them to bill high, because your water meter's going out. Like, well, we end up doing, we, who was it, Eljoy, that we replaced the water meter not too long ago, and their bill, their bill went up substantially, because it was just the meter that wore out. But it costs a lot of money to replace a water meter, and that's on us to do, but if we can figure that there's a, like, an ROI for us to do it, then we do it, and that also contributes to the, to the water loss report, too. So there's a lot of factors in that, in that twenty-four percent. I don't want that, that hurts. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, accounts payable, everybody's favorite. The small one. Do you have any questions about the small one? Everybody have time, can I have a look, are we good?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve accounts payable, uh, to personnel in the amount of eighty dollars.
Sure.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Palestine, she passed by.
Now, the big one. Regular accounts payable. What kind of questions do we have? Mr. Coth. What?
I have real questions.
Ms. Palestine.
Yes, um, page fifty-five. I just wanted to check with the, uh, the foreign main, please. I just wanted to see if that was separate from the projects that we're doing. There were manhole covers, cleanout boxes, so this is related to the Streetscape project, and, um, this is part of the twenty-seven hundred dollars that I noted that was, um, you know, being recorded um, as part of Streetscape issues, if you will. So, so you're already paying that, and then paying that separate and side for. Yes.
Well, because that's under, that's under the spending limit, so the village manager would need to report to us.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to connect it to the project.
No, and that's what, and that's what you're, you, the finance director slash acting village manager is keeping track of all expenses for Streetscape projects, so that we could go, we'll have an accurate reporting for the end of Friday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Page fifty-eight, the farm tap, and I just want, I'm just assuming that was to fix the salt dome that collapsed? If it is to actually replace the salt dome, yes. Um.
Sorry, there was a question, maybe?
No.
Page fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Bodywork for Getz Auto, just was curious if there was an accident or something, because it's fifty-one hundred dollars.
Yep, there was an accident, um, it happened on Mill Avenue. Nobody was injured, um, just damaged our truck. We hit one of our own trucks or somebody else? We hit, uh, let's just say they came together.
Okay.
Village truck?
No, 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 uh, village truck and somebody else's, the other truck was not damaged.
Mill, Mills is the one street that Gets is on, right?
Yes.
And it's not like an expressway. You can't go more than twenty-five, thirty miles an hour down that road anyway.
There was, um, reportedly, there was a truck that was parked along the side of the road, and our truck went to overtake them, and it pulled out, and they kind of came together, so. I did not turn this, I did not turn, no, there, there was a police report, there was no tickets issued, um.
They had to be handled right, because we didn't read about it on Facebook.
Right, um, we did not, uh, for five thousand dollars, we didn't, we have a thousand dollar deductible, and we did not file an insurance claim, just to, that was okay. Okay.
Was it one of the brand-new trucks?
Newer.
So what's, wasn't it two thousand?
Acquired and.
Yeah, two thousand, two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
Maybe.
Any other questions?
There was a lot for me in this one, I apologize. Um, page sixty was the, uh, Hampshire Fire Protection, and it was a classification fee release, and I didn't know what that was.
So a classification fee is, uh, equivalent to an impact fee for commercial buildings. So that is the one and only, uh, commercial impact fee that's collected from, uh, commercial, new building, new commercial buildings. This happened to be the freight union building that's up on, uh, Atlantic Gas Road. Uh-huh.
We're just the keeper of those funds, kind of a.
There was, if you recall, um, at the last meeting, we did a refund, um, to Stanley, and I just kind of held this, just to make sure that this, this fee was, I mean, it's not related to, to that, maybe this is the standard one. Now that I said it's freight union, this actually is the standard one. I wanted to make sure that our calculation was correct, and this was not affected as well, because if you recall, there was some calculation here, it's on square foot versus cubic feet, and this particular calculation is on square feet. So it's, it's good, so we sent it off.
And, and one last, my very last, it's more of a question to the chief, just not on the amount, but, um, on page sixty-five, the NEMERT, um, which is the annual membership. I was just curious, is how much training or how much do we use NEMERT, um, for the department?
Quite a bit, it's, uh, an annual due per officer. We pay that, and we get a reduced cost of, to enroll them. Uh, each officer probably would spend, oh, sixteen hours to, to twenty-four hours per year uh, on these classes. So you time that by the officers, and we definitely get our money's worth.
Okay. Glad you're here, I know there were some issues, I know years back with NEMERT, and not really offering training anymore because financial stuff, so.
Oh, yeah, they've got past that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you for the dollars.
On page sixty-one, the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Insurance, what is that?
That is, um, their request and budget allowed, um, allowance to promote tourism and overnight stays in the village.
Years ago, we agreed to pay them some money, because they, it was more partnership than, um, than the class of membership. So we talked about that, budget process as well as evaluating that, if it's needed, which is true. Because of this feeling of budget committee, that this may be last year. Questions, comments, concerns, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Vote. First. Second. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Palestine.
Hi.
Ms. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
We should pass by.
Okay, everybody's favorite, board committee reports, okay, who's up first?
BDC. Uh, BDC is meeting next Wednesday, upcoming meeting. Um, and there will be, uh, a consideration, depending on what comes out of the beautification committee, there may be a consideration of a facade grant application, and, uh, discussion around that as to the recommendation payment. Uh, and then it's just a regular, some, these questions from BDC. Anything to add, Mr. Ray, or? Such manager, like, I'm afraid. A, a new liquor license for the new owner of Jimmy's Sports Bar was approved tonight.
Yep, sure, it's gonna be, the name is gonna change to Harps Lounge. The gentleman who bought it, uh, Mr. Fannin lives in Genoa, and he has, he has purchased Jimmy's Sports Bar, and is going to be changing the name Harps Lounge in honor of his daughter. So he, uh, is gonna be doing.
Open, open August first.
Yep, he's gonna be doing some, uh, changes to the inside of the building, gonna be getting all applicable permits, and, uh, should be opening it up this first. And, uh, Trustee Coth, they're gonna be serving full salary.
That's what he said.
So.
That part of the process?
That was, that was. Dave, your public relations.
Our next meeting is next Thursday, July fourteenth, that's three, three hours. Would you like your newsletters that you should have received either yesterday or today in the mail?
Got it today.
Awesome.
I wonder, there's gotta be somewhere.
In our mailbox?
Why, for your house.
Oh.
There's probably extras up in front.
There are.
That's right.
Along with your letter reminding you of all the services Blood Brothers offers, so.
I'm sure there's a dark word somewhere with my picture on it. Every month, they get a different one, they fill it up holes from the last one.
That's why our pictures are not in the newsletter.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Anything else to add? Okay, uh, public works?
Nothing at this time.
Budget?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, so new business, I have one thing, but let's talk about chickens first. Okay, um.
Chicken, serious issue, make sure we talk about.
But then, we can talk about, you, you first, let's do that first.
Okay, um, I had a question, I just wanted to know if the village was aware there was somebody spraying in the woods at Tuscan Park? Um, I could probably get you a date based on some of my pictures, but it was about three weeks ago, and now all of the, um, berry species are dead. They, I asked the guy what he was doing, and he said that he was spraying for invasive tree species. Um, but berries are not trees, and that is the source for all of the wildlife that lives in there. And so I wanted to know if the village was involved in that, or, I'm trying to figure out which municipality, because.
If the village is involved.
Was it?
We need, the village, someone at the village needs to find out who did it, and give us a full report, because you don't spray for trees.
No, that's, that's. Because it's park district property, we're not involved in any of that, period.
We wouldn't be allowed to.
Where, at Tuscan?
Yeah.
And the woods is all phase two of Tuscan, but it's still the property.
It's all property of the park district.
No, it isn't.
Sure it is. Where all the campsites are and stuff, yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah, the campsites are, but that's where it ends.
But where, where, where was this guy at? Was he in the campsite, was he?
He was not at a campsite, but he was in the woods surrounding the campsite.
Yeah, so that would be park district.
That's why I was asking, because I want to know which municipality.
I've been, that sprays at the park district, I didn't spray.
So.
I, my guess, my, my guess is it probably was something that had to do with Boy Scouts, I don't know. But the Boy Scouts use the.
Then I will find out and bring it back to the board, because, uh, that stuff's not supposed to go on without my knowledge.
I, 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 you know, I'm all about.
And I just wanted to ask if that was, if we had any knowledge, or if it was involving us in any way.
I was out that it was one of our guys.
Mr. Ray, do you, do you know of any knowledge?
Of course.
And you said you talked to the individual?
I did.
So, and he wasn't wearing like a Bill of the Hampshire shirt or anything?
No.
So it wasn't that hard guy?
It was a contractor.
Oh, he was a contractor.
But I just know he contracted.
Was it, it was a park, was it?
Park's mosquito?
Yeah, they, there's no reason enough to be back in the woods.
It does have a helicopter, they drive.
No, I, well, they.
That stuff, he does a helicopter.
And then they, then they ride around them all day, but.
The woods behind it, yes.
That's the campsites that the park district maintains for Boy Scouts, and they've got, like, most of them.
I thought we'd find out by the.
But to your point, somebody's not gonna go do that at a cost without having a contractor.
Well, that's, that's why I want to know contracted, and I didn't see it in our reports, so I assumed it was, but I just wanted to make sure that it had nothing to do with the village, or, we'll be not done.
We used to have, that used to be our property, but we deeded it over to the park district, so.
Did you see a truck? I did, I don't remember if I took a picture, but, okay.
Do you remember the color of the truck?
It was white.
I was gonna say, it was probably white, yeah, but, no, I don't remember, but I will think about it.
It was kind of like that burnt orange, yeah, that burnt orange, that one fifty.
It was, I think, that I went back.
No, it's.
This lead, and the only thing that has been affected is all of the, the food-bearing plants for the wildlife, so that's problematic, so I want to figure out where to address that, so.
Also, I may not know, that's an area where kids could be going through, it's not toxic to kids. There's a lot of things, if anything on park district property, Trustee Coth should be aware of, anyway.
Absolutely.
If it happens without him being aware of.
Well, I just didn't, if it were.
I just remember you talking about.
Saying you missed contract to do it, so.
Education.
Nothing happens out there.
Well, that's what I wanted to know, but.
That's the first permit.
Yeah, I should have, but.
I did that with people.
But because I had my dog with me, and I was already.
Asking for the permit. Knowing that we don't.
Right, but I was, okay.
No, I, so I would. You know, over the park district, I'd come. All right, make sure you, make, make sure.
I already.
Oh, good, make her feel the heat for both sides. Oh, good. Make her feel the heat for both sides. Hi, this is trustee Solder.
No, just to know, sorry.
Okay, any other new business before we talk about two subjects? Want to do chickens first or do you want to do nine eighty one stop State Street? You guys pick.
It's gonna take longer.
I don't know.
They're both gonna be longer.
Nine eighty one State Street because I didn't.
So we own the property at nine eighty one South State.
Oh, that's.
Yes.
Hashtag save nine eighty one.
Okay.
Okay, so. I have a bear, bear with me here because I took a lot of notes, okay? And so I, I, I don't mean, really don't mean to bore you guys with any of this, but I want to. I'm a big proponent and you need to write your own novel or somebody's going to do it for you, right? And so there's an individual right now attempting to write our novel and I don't like it. I think that it's unfair and I think it's misrepresentative of the work that we've done here at the village. And I want to make, I want to take this opportunity because we recorded to address it. Okay, so we purchased that home several years ago, we the village purchased that home several years ago and what we felt was a reasonable price to kind of control the destiny of that corner. That's not been anything that we've kept secret. The vote was very public about why we bought it. And the reasons for which, in which we bought it, okay? And, and at the time, we thought that we would want to control the destiny of the corner being that there's a huge parking lot on the one side of a professional building. And there's only one home in between that home and the chicken. We thought that we would be able to control a little bit of the, or have, I have a say, control means the wrong way, but have an influence in the type of use of that. The thought at the time is that we didn't want it to be residents anymore because the house was in disrepair anyway. And we wanted it to be zoned if and when somebody would want to come by it as a business slash commercial. That was the feeling of the board at the time. We didn't have any concrete plans for the home and still don't. As you know, we've had talked about it. To, to date, to my knowledge, we've only had one interested party, which was recently, which was a few weeks ago or a month ago. The question was raised why we were paying for appraisal in the account payable. We had the house appraised due to the interest, just to find out what it was worth. It was worth a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The interested party approached our village manager, Jay, and said, hey, I'm kind of interested in your property. But I'm also maybe interested in the property next door because our property is actually two lots. Okay, so I want, I'd like to purchase all three. You know the owner next door, to which Jay had reached out to the property owner and said, the village has been approached by a business located in Hampshire interested in buying the house we own at nine eighty one State. If they buy the property, they plan to develop it as office slash retail. He may also be interested in your house, in your house at nine eighty seven South State. As a matter of information, the village had an appraisal done on the house we own at nine eighty one South State. And the market value is estimated between a hundred and a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars by Jacobs and Associates that we paid to be used. If you are interested in selling, let me know and I will have the potential buyer contact you directly. Now, if the village were to choose to sell the home, it has to go for bid, much like we did with that parcel. You know, you guys remember, everything has to go for bid and it has to be a public process and all that stuff. So even if we had a potential, right, that, you're looking at me funny, is that?
Oh, I didn't mean to make a funny face, but actually I believe the property can be sold as long as well, no, how does that work?
Well, there's, there's two different methods.
The eighty percent.
But, but I'm not sure, is it, is it important right now to?
Well, anything, what I'm trying to get at is anything that we would do with the property would be public and would be some sort of, in which direction to, to, to proceed. Either we would have to put the property up for sale and sell it to, your stipulation, which is eighty percent of the market value.
There's one, one process is at least eighty percent of the appraised value.
Or, or we would have to go up. Right, that's, but any step we would take would be a very public process and it would have to go through this board. Okay?
Correct. That's, that's absolutely correct.
So that being said, the neighbor responded to us, and this, again, direct quotes with Jay. Yes, you can have the potential buyer contact us if he wishes, though we aren't actually looking to sell. May I ask who this gentleman is? We would also be, we would be interested in purchasing the house the village owns at nine eighty one South State Street, the combined lots. In the past, we had talked about, we talked with the company about a possible venture, but our lot is rather small. Have you received an offer on the property yet? Now, Jay emailed the property owner on June second. The property owner responded on June third. The property owner then on June seventeenth posted a bunch of information about the house with our village's plans to tear down the building and we need to save it and the village, as I spoke with the village manager and all of that stuff, which we all read. Okay, so from June third to June seventeenth, there was no communication, period, to my knowledge, with the property owner about, you know, any sale or any of that stuff. So at this point, on June seventeenth, two, twenty twenty two, on June, July second, twenty twenty two, and now on July seventh, twenty twenty two, there were posts made online with history of the property and family with many inaccurate statements, never once mentioning the fact that the owner of the neighboring property was the one making the post. Number one. Number two, or that it was his intention to purchase the property or start a commercial development himself. So that, that's where we sit as far as that goes. I just want to be clear and transparent. That's where it is. Today in his post, he said that he spoke with King County and there was an opportunity for King County to come and designate that building that we own as a historic place on the registry. I also spoke with the county. The only way that that were to happen is if we were to sign a intergovernmental agreement with King County allowing their program to extend within the village limits. Because that house is in the village limits of Hampshire, we would have to sign a intergovernmental agreement with King County, what, King County Prevention Planner, I think she was, is her title, that would extend their programming to the village. However, if we chose to do that anyway, she said, it's really no, the agreement's only excluded as the paper it's written on because we can terminate it at any time if we felt so chose. I want to be clear. I, I, I feel like this board, and I, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I feel like this board has very much supported the preservation of history within our community. I think there's several of us that are involved in the King County or the Hampshire Township Historical Society. But with over fifty million dollars in capital projects that we still have no way to pay for, it's hard to prioritize the rehab of this house, no matter how historic it may be, above water mains and other crucial services and that kind of thing. The Hampshire, I also find it important to mention that the Hampshire Township Historical Society also spoke with Julia last year about raising money and that kind of thing. But tonight, I wanted to kind of get the pulse of board. I did speak with Jay. I want the record to show that I didn't call him. He called me because he's on vacation. And so I told him that I wouldn't call him, but he called me about something and we got to talking and the chairman of our beautification committee, Bill Swalwell, who you guys all know, former trustee, has agreed to meet with Bonnie and Jay next week to speak about try to find them space because as we all know, the Hampshire Township Historical Society is looking for a space. Jay has even offered to try to sell this building to the Hampshire Township Historical Society. But, you know, they, they seem relatively uninterested. Now, in speaking with Jay and in light of this conversation online, I wanted to get a pulse of, it's not very, it's not uncommon for the municipality to lease a space to a nonprofit for, you know, like a dollar a year or whatever it is for them to maintain and or restore, okay? I, I just wanted to kind of get the pulse of, one, if that was something that this board was willing to consider. Okay, which I, I really don't think that we would take issue with that. The part that concerns me in general is we're sitting on it right now and the fire department uses it, as you know, as a training facility. We're sitting in on it right now. We're not doing anything because we don't have the money to, to really do anything with it, right? We're gonna, you know, have conversations with the Township Historical Society, but, you know, Bonnie came in here last week or two weeks ago made it perfectly clear that they don't have a whole lot of money either and nor did they have any interest in raising any money of any sort or doing any type of capital campaigns. But say that the tune of the historical society were to change based on recent events and maybe harness some of the momentum on social media to raise capital funds and that kind of stuff, and then they had the wherewithal to maybe restore this or another nonprofit group stepped up, like there's another group within King County called the King County, King County Preservation Partners. They would, you know, they, they make, they do like the Frank Lloyd Wright House and Japanese Garden in King County and that kind of stuff. I just want to be clear in the fact that it's not the village intention, this village's intention to tear down the building just on the fact that it's in disrepair. If somebody either wants to step up and buy the building, right, for appraised value or we put it out to bid or whatever. And we, the village has always been willing to have that conversation. Or, you know, again, the conversation I'm wanting to bring up because are you guys, is this board willing to entertain the conversation of a nonprofit that has their act together and has the wherewithal to restore said building for a purpose commercial wise, like restore it so that they can use it as like an insurance office or maybe like the chamber office or something of that nature? Is that something that we're willing to, to, to consider? I just I just, at the end of the day, again, you don't write your novel, somebody's gonna do that for us and somebody's writing our novel. And I'm not really happy about the tone that it's taking because I feel like some of the conversation is being, it's being presented in a very one-sided manner and I think that there's a lot of good things that are coming out of it, raising awareness and learning about the family that own the home and all of that good stuff, but to say that the King, that King County is on board with designating it is, is lead residents to believe that if King County designates this as a historic place, that we can't do anything with it, number one, which is, it's just not true. Number two is that we don't, we don't have a plan for this building. We've never had a plan for this building. And, and, you know, and, and the fact that people are saying that we're wanting to tear it down is another untrue statement.
We, we should look at past minutes as to why we purchased it.
Okay.
That's what we should do because there was a reason behind the purchase.
Right.
I thought at the time, if I remember, they were gonna, in hopes of remodeling and for Public Works. And when they went inside and looked and realized that it was well beyond that.
You know, for, for an office space or something of that nature. I thought that was one of the.
There was a reason we purchased it.
Well, the biggest thing was is if it worked out for that, that was fine, but the biggest reason was to control the destiny of that corner. I'm very, I'm very clear in remembering that part of it. But regardless of whether or not we use it for office space or anything, you know, but we did some evaluation of the home. It, it, it needs extensive, extensive repairs. And so that's why at the current time, we've allowed the fire department to use it for training because it's just, it's not, it's good for them because they don't have to leave town and they get called.
It's not safe.
You know.
I have a question. Sure. If we didn't lease it to a nonprofit, we have to issue any sort of occupancy permit and would that put us in any sort of liability knowing full well that it is not in good care?
We'd have to bring it up to code.
Well, that, that would, because there would have to be conditions upon the lease, right? We'd have to make sure that it's, you know.
Could lease it to them with the requirements if they bring it up to code?
Right, that would, that's my concern. Is there a way to do that?
Is an occupancy permit gonna issue?
Sure, and, and the whole theory is, is that again, I mean, unless this board wants to go otherwise, I mean, we really didn't want to. At, at the end of the day, the village, I don't think, has any place to be a landlord either. So like, we lease it to a nonprofit and they restore it as a residence and then we have people living there collecting rent and that kind, that's not what we, that's not what we're looking to do. So like to do some kind of like nonprofit for, you know, like a welcome center or like a history center, some of these things that have been suggested. You know, I, that's, that's the use case I'm seeing.
Yes.
Well, I think based on the conversations, because I've been following those online, there's an awful lot of interest and I would encourage those who are interested in preserving this and form a fundraiser of some sort, get the money and buy it and do that. But I don't feel like with all of the projects that the village needs to accomplish for the safety and well-being of our residents, that we are obligated to complete with the money that we have, that money needs to go to these things first. That's a want, not a need. And believe me, as a member of the historical society, okay, in like seventeen different places, thank you very much, who loves history. We also have to look at the people who are living. And the people who live here need to have safe water, for example. We need to have all of these other things and our money should go to those things first. If we had the extra, there it is. So if you guys are interested, put your money where your mouth is. I would love to see it. You've got an awful lot of people, whether there are over four hundred comments, if everybody chipped in hundred bucks, that's a lot of money to do some rehab.
Well, I was gonna say, I like the idea of us leasing it to a nonprofit. I would, I would be up for leasing it for the dollar or whatever to the historical society. And then encourage everyone that is passionate or is passionate about the project to volunteer to the historical society to rehab it so that there's not a high cost. There's also museum grants and things that the historical society could do rather than just having a fundraiser. That could be an easy fundraiser for everybody that's passionate. And that does, you know, the historical society has come and talked about the need of space. There's a lot of artifacts they'd like to have on display. This solves a lot of things that they need that I think we would need. It, it doesn't break our bank by not selling it. We haven't sold it today. Right, and I think it also, if there's such passion about it, which it looks like there was, I, I enjoy reading the, the history of what was in there. And those people have commented on it. If they're tradespeople or they know tradespeople, they can volunteer time and bring it to code and have that as part of the lease. I think that's a great opportunity. But I, I would say it needs to be to somebody like the Hampshire Township Historical Society to use that's beneficial to if, if it's being saved because it's a historical. I do think that some residents that commented that there are a lot of good historical homes throughout town is also a valid, and just down here, the multi-story building says eighteen eighty four or something on the top. So we have a lot of really cool property. We have the community, this could be a fun, like a good way for the community to come together to support something, volunteer their time. If they're willing to do that, I think great, but I agree, I don't know that the village can pay through our budget to rehab it. But I think if others are willing and we, and we can lease it for a dollar to that nonprofit, great.
I think that, I think it's also important to realize that if the village takes on this burden, like right now it's a village property. You know, we have to worry about things like prevailing wage and, and all of that kind of stuff because we can't do tier work and stuff if we rehab it. But if we lease it, that application is, is gone. And, and also all of the grants that we have a hard time qualifying for because we are the village of Hampshire and we have a median income of this, which we've spoke about several, several times. If a nonprofit leases the building from us, then again, that burden of not, of the median income and that whole conversation is gone.
Well, because the nonprofit.
Because the nonprofit applies. And so I think that, I think that I think this is a good opportunity for the historical society, maybe gain some membership and some. But I, I'm not gonna speak.
I think we have some amazingly talented tradespeople. Also, and some have commented on here that could help to lend a hand to help like the historical society or.
Since, if I understood you correctly, that that landowner that's right nearby had intentions or thoughts of buying property himself to use it for his own commercial needs. And so to make it look like we're trying to tear something down to put something up, I think it was a little bit unfair. I also commented on it and suggested the five oh one C three would be a great way to start to this gentleman since he was so passionate about it. With four hundred people that have commented, the Hampshire Township Historical Society has thirty three members. Thirty three. And each one of those thirty three members pay, I think, twenty dollars for their dues. So this passionate interest in the history of the town, embrace opportunity, honor tradition. Would be really nice to see people then jump onto the historical society because right now as a very small organization, they could not take this on to rehab a house like that and have no, any of the funds that they need nor the time and the ability to manage that kind of a project. So while I think it's a great idea and I would support leasing into a nonprofit, I think that's a huge bite for that organization, of which I am also a member of. But I just, I don't know if that's is feasible, but I think everybody here and in town all agrees that to save a piece of history is important, but that is probably a two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, you know, project and stuff, so. Of, of which.
I think, I think, I think we need to check the minutes because that's not how it was sold to the board that was out here to do the purchase. That's not what was presented to that board. That's not what was presented to that board. That was a, a purchase because they thought that that corner was gonna go big time commercial. And that the house next to them would sell and we would be holding the key.
Yeah.
That's how it was presented to the board. So if, if, if there's an issue, uh, I never wanted to purchase. Just because I knew we were gonna get into this, into this predicament right now. So I think we, we either need to, rather than lease it, rent it, whatever, we either need to move forward and do something or walk away.
Well, right now, we don't have anybody wanting to buy it. We have a lot of people with a lot of ideas, but nobody's wanting to buy it. This is what it comes down to. And so here's, I mean, that's where we're at. I mean, Toby, Toby called it outright. I mean, what do we do?
Dude, we haven't rezoned commercial.
We have done nothing with it. We have done nothing with the property. Residential at the current time, but we could, again, if we were to act like, let's put, let's say that the village shows that we want to be done with it to Toby's. We want to be done with it. We want to put it up for sale. We can put a for sale sign in front of it and put it as a condition of the sale that it gets rezoned. Or rezoned before it was for sale. You know, that's something that we could do and then they'd be locked into it, at least for the term of the people that are here, right? Because we're not gonna like zone it one way and then after somebody buys it, rezon it, you know? Again, I don't, I don't know what the right, I don't know what the right answer is, but I wanted to present it in a way, I wanted to present it again, to address what's going on here because I don't like, I don't like it being one-sided. And I don't like that somebody's writing our narrative. Just don't. I think it's unfair and I think the way that it's being presented is, is with, while there are a lot of facts in what he is saying online, right? There's a lot of things that he's leaving out that's making us look bad. And everything that we have done regarding this house, even to trustee coach's points, we go back to the minutes and look and see everything that we've done with it. Whether it be paints, putting the painting with the fire department, whether it be mowing the grass and all that other stuff. It's like we, we've been very public about this. At which we blowing up like it is, I don't, I don't appreciate it. And if somebody, again, to, to, if somebody wants to buy it right now, come buy it. You don't, take us off.
We've had it three years, two years.
I, I agree. You should, you should go back and look at your, your intent. Well, respectfully, regardless, regardless of what the intent of the board was at the time, it's a new board. And so we can look at the intent and try to honor what they wanted. But at the end of the day, if this board feels differently based on different circumstances, that's well within our
And, but, but I honestly think that we need to go back to the minutes so this board can see what the purchase of that home, why it was purchased and what the intent was for.
So Ms. Burke, is that, is that, is that something that you can dig up and send us?
Should.
Email us. Cause you don't need to wait till the next meeting for that. She can dig up the meetings, the meetings involving that home with the sale on the parts and all that kind of stuff. As if you don't have anything else to do tomorrow. So she can get that. But again, there's no action items needed. But again, I, I, I just, this one's really been bugging me. Because I really feel like, and I'm just gonna call it what it is. I feel like the neighbor was led, as a courtesy, the neighbor was brought into the conversation and he has exploited this conversation with the village and said one thing and is now doing another. And again, I'm looking right at the camera. Mr. Orton knows how to get ahold of me. He's gotten ahold of me before about multiple issues in the past, whether it be through, for IDOT or construction or drainage and all of that kind of stuff. My phones never rang once.
He's just throwing jams.
If he wants, if he wants to talk about this, I'm here and he has my number. Or any one of us at the board. So, anyway, next, uh, next topic. I apologize that that took so long. Uh, chickens. We talked about, we talked about every chicken meeting, uh, talked about chickens at every meeting since we cast. So here we are. What are we, what are we feeling about what was presented tonight or what do you guys want to talk about?
I have a question about screening.
Sure.
Okay.
About what?
Screening.
The privacy screening.
Yeah. I, I do not recall our conversation very well. And I've looked through the past minutes and I don't, I still don't quite understand what we thought meant by screening. Did you mean that nobody else could see them?
Mr. Ray, can you address some of? I don't think the village board addressed that provision specifically when you were, you know, asking questions. Um, the intention from the, uh, putting it in there as a, you know, restrictive ordinance was that it would block the view from the neighbors with at least a six-foot fence or landscaping.
Uh, Mr. Rock, was this something that was discussed at zoning or planning zoning?
We didn't touch on this subject. I don't recall specifically. And again, it was more just of a general screen from the neighbors.
And I swear, right? Not that they couldn't see it.
Correct.
So it could still be visible, but just not be.
Well, like lattice, lattice can be bushes, lattice can be, or fencing can, screening can be bushes, it can be fencing of some kind, it can be lattice. It can be, you know, it's not a matter.
Why is this different than any other thing?
Chicken?
I suppose you, rabbit hutch that was mentioned.
She mentioned, she, she mentioned rabbit hutches and I, I would think that we need some clarification on that because she was mentioning in general terms. I don't necessarily, do we allow rabbit hutches in the backyard? Do we even have them? I don't even think of.
There's not, there's nothing in this village that can stop you from doing it. There's no code, no ordinance.
I think the only terms in the code are livestock and I don't know if a domesticated pet rabbit would be, that'd be.
So I guess my concern is that the, the screening, if it is shrubbery, for example, or a fence that, that is a solid fence, it does block airflow, which does not help with the health of the flock. So I don't think our intent was to create a situation where it would impede the health of the flock. I think it was to buffer the, you know, the, the issues with neighbors. It's not that we shouldn't. But maybe that they aren't looking at them scratching dirt or something. I don't know. Because I didn't, I didn't think it was as restrictive as it seems to be.
Yeah, I guess my thing is I, there are a lot of properties, especially in the local department of Hampshire that don't have any. So I think I took this wrong. I took it as they have to be within a fenced enclosure. You can't just have the coop and then let the chickens run around your unfenced backyard.
Right.
Right. That they had to be maintained within your property.
Right.
I, I agree. I, I don't know that.
See, and chicken screening, if you go to our leader, tractor supply, you're gonna get roll of, essentially a mesh, a wire mesh. And I guess that's what I thought we were talking about.
Yeah.
So I didn't know we meant like my neighbor has a pool and doesn't want us to look at them, you know, in their pool. So they built this thing so nobody can see. I didn't, that's not how I took it. So I'm confused about what, you know, what's happening between what we assume and what's happening when staff is trying to
Sure.
Um, make sure that everything is up to the level of the test.
So the word screening, as we've been, uh, telling the permit applicants and license holders, uh, we're interpreting it the same way we interpret screening requirements for other parts of the code, which, uh, as, as Mr. Dungara pointed out earlier, are all commercial or industrial for parking has to be screened off from residential neighbors. Industrial equipment and materials that are stored outside have to be screened. And so effective screening in that sense is, that's the same way we've been interpreting it. It's, it could be a chain of fence with slats in it. Um, we went to Home Depot, not went to Home Depot, got on the website, Home Depot, Menards and Lowe's and found that they have privacy lattice, which has a certain gap in it. Said, okay, that'd be good. Effective screening is, you know, the spirit of keeping it visibly blocked. Um, by all means, if that's something that we're, it's just too restrictive. I, I have no personal opinion about it, so.
Is that what we meant? I guess.
I don't.
Have we, Ray? The ordinance?
Oh, what do you mean?
Have we? I, I'm just, uh, confused, dude. Effectively screened from all neighboring properties by fencing or landscaping. In this particular case, the property is a three-quarter acre upside corner. So effectively screening only require two bushes. So I think this is maybe an order of thought. Uh, yeah. There is nothing that dictates mostly any of the screening has to apply to the chicken coop. So airflow is an issue. That's my perspective. That's my opinion.
Are we talking about this resident's lot?
Yes.
Cause it's not a corner lot. It's.
I was advised it was an outside corner lot.
It's, it's a, it's not on the corner of two streets. It's in the corner of two streets. So then behind her, she has several neighbors. They all have to share yards.
And there's no property behind this home.
Correct.
There is nothing that dictates that we are requiring a one hundred percent coverage.
So what would be?
Uh, Mr. Hedges, Mrs., Mr. Hedges went out and visited, uh, Ms. Dungara in particular. Uh, let's just, let's, let's try to remove, let's remove Ms. Dungara for one moment. Okay. So we've got residents that have gotten their coop, right? And they, they read the code and they read their rules and then they got their license and they are building their coop or bought a coop, not because they're not everybody's handy, you can build that kind of stuff. And bought a coop that would comply with said code.
Right.
And they're moving right along. Do we know, uh, Mr. Ray, how many inspections we have done to date on coops? Or, uh, or how many permits have been applied for?
Uh, the last time I looked, there's, there had only been two permits applied for. I know one of them has been issued and they are constructing their coop and pen and they have their, the way their property is, they only needed to put up screen on two sides. So, um.
It could be a single bush.
I don't know if they've, uh.
From neighboring property.
Sure. Uh, it's, it's no different than up on Kai's, right?
They did. Two, two twenty Kai's?
Yeah, they did bushes along the one side.
It was died, but yeah.
So, no, seriously, so along the park.
No, they are still.
They're still, they're still penned in, but they could. The, I think the, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to introduce conjecture into this, but this is a new program. It was a pilot program. And so things need to be changed. We'll, hey, let's, let's, let's address it. But at the end of the day, again, the village board didn't want to say, okay, let's put up chicken coops and then have the neighbors all yelling and screaming. And I guess, I get the sustainability part of it. I get it. I get all of it. But there's a lot of residents that, that live here that live here because it's not a park. And the introduction of chickens is, is not something that everybody feels is a wonderful thing. And so, and at the end of the day, when you apply for a chicken permit, you don't need that, you don't need to ask your neighbors. You just go and you get your permit, you go through the construction project and whether your neighbor wants them or not, they're gonna get them. I mean, that's.
Right now, if you had a neighbor put up a shed you didn't like.
Exactly, exactly.
But I guess, again, I'm just trying to figure out what is effective screening and what is the definition of it?
Sure.
You know, there are lots of different interpretations, it sounds like, and, and that's.
I'll, I'll just add one thing, which is that staff makes an interpretation and then if somebody disagrees with it, the process is that they can go to the planning zoning commission to appeal that. And the planning zoning commission as a body can then redirect the interpretation.
Is there a cost associated with that?
Can, can I ask a question while you're talking about that? Why, why does, if, if, why do they gotta go to planning zoning? Why can't they come right before this board? Why do they gotta go to planning zoning and pay money out of their pocket for four chickens?
Because, because it's a change to the zoning code. The, the, that's why. I mean, I.
Now, let's change the rules on the, on the chicken coop. So we, people are gonna, how much does six chickens cost?
Oh, no.
That is still a lot. I'm talking live chicken.
No, they, no, what, what I'm saying is if they have a problem with the zoning restrictions, whether it be height restrictions of, is defined by the ordinance or screening requirements is defined by the ordinance, the exception process would be to get a zoning variance or we as a village board would act and change that height restrictions of coops and change the screening requirement.
Let's change the screening requirements. How? We'd, we'd have to really think about the height requirements. You got ten, fifteen feet?
Well, and I.
And I mean, personally, I mean, I voted against this because we have different lots in this village. I mean, we have some that are hundreds of acres. Well, I should say that's limits, but I mean, you know, two, three acre pieces of property and then we've got some that are a quarter acre. And with that little quarter acre to turn around and put a chicken coop in it, that affects a ton of neighbors. And so to eliminate that screening, I think is wrong. Um, and I know even looking as to, you know, how much, you know, egress, ingress, et cetera, and how much it has to be, you know, away from fences and, and I mean, that goes into it. And that's great. When you've got a quarter acre, a three-quarter acre lot or something, it's not as big of a deal. And the neighbors aren't right on top. And, and I don't think this is anything to do with, you know, shunning somebody because they've got chickens. I think that's great that you can have chickens. But the fact is, is your neighbor doesn't want chickens. And, and if you're in a quarter acre lot and there's a coop there and there's no screening and the, the, that particular person doesn't take care of the chickens, you've got all kinds of issues with smells, et cetera. And then the fear of that neighbor having to call the village because of it. And who else is gonna know who called? It's gonna be me.
Well, I think that there's another, there's another concern, there's another concern too with, with people being able to enjoy their backyards in the way that they were intending to do. And then your neighbor puts up a chicken coop that you may agree with or you may not. Or you may have a dog that may be interested in the chickens and then the dog is barking all the time because it's staring at the chickens. And then the neighbor's dog is the problem. I mean, I just.
What I would, what I would like to ask is the board would be okay with? Is we've had ten permits that we allowed for this pilot. Or ten, ten homes to, to apply for the license. We've only had two applied for. Two permits of the ten. The ten went pretty quick.
Yes.
Of those ten that went pretty quick, we have two permits that have been applied for, one issued. I'd be interested if, if the staff could contact the license holders to understand the delay in wanting to move forward in the process when there was a quick reaction to getting it, to understand if there's any.
No public comment at this time.
To understand if there is, um, a consensus amongst the people that did the licenses. Because as a pilot, we said part of it is we would revisit after people had an opportunity to do it. Did we get complaints from the community? Was there concerns about the way the ordinance was? I think we still need to give some time for for things to work out. But I would be curious because they went, the license applications went quick and now it seems to be a stalled process to to get things going. And so I would be, I don't know, if the, if the board is, thinks it's a good idea. If not, I'm okay with that too. But to have, have some, have staff reach out to those license holders just to find out. Do you have the plans? Is there something keeping you from it? Is, is, do you have concerns with it or is everything okay and it's just you're, you're saving up for it? You're looking to get the right things.
How much was the license?
So license is twenty dollars. The permit fee is.
So licensed you to.
So seven people or eight people might have bought them and just sit on them. So nobody else could get them.
I know of one instance in the village that that's happened. I know one person bought it. I know one person bought one and he really wants them and his wife doesn't. So now the permit sits. And so, and so I know that, I know that.
Well, but that's fine. So that's one case. But I think it's worth at least asking the question because we've had one person that bought a license that has a concern. I'm curious if there are shared concerns or if it's just people are like, hey, we're in the process and we just haven't started yet.
Well, I, I understand. I, I'm curious if, I mean, if the board feels a way that we should do that, but I don't necessarily know that we should get this.
In a pilot program, we should evaluate the members of the program. Whether the program works, should be adjusted, should be.
You got plans for, for Mr. Ray?
Otherwise, it's not. That's just my opinion.
Do you have plans, Mr. Ray?
Tomorrow, we got a couple of meetings, but I can surely call some people.
Is that something that you want to reach out and see where?
I think a few that are just trying to figure out.
Yeah, which they, yeah.
Just, just trying to figure it out. Yes.
I think it's just us trying to make sure the program is the best that it can be. And who's better to ask than those who apply for licenses? And, and any of the people that call staff come in, they need to know that, you know, we're not gonna move this by leaps and bounds two days after they come in. They need to know that upfront.
Now, now, as to, to date, just for public knowledge, have there been residents that have gotten permits that have actually called the village and reached out with concerns about screening? How many residents? You don't have to give names, but how many?
I did just check, uh, the two applications, both have, both permits have been issued. I have not been contacted with concerns from either of those two. I have had several conversations with one of them, but they weren't. This is a problem. We're not gonna be able to do it. Or just asking questions.
So to date of the ten permits that were issued, the, we have had one resident call with concerns about the actual ordinance. Like, that, that take issue with what we have in place. So with that also. Right.
So it would be of interest to several of us to find out why those.
When did we approve? I mean, sixty days ago, four days?
Yeah.
Maybe we give it some more time.
I don't want to touch, I mean, my personal opinion is not to touch the ordinance. To move forward, let's see where it goes. Um, you know, I still go with the fact that we've got different sized lots all over this village and what works at one place may not work at another. The whole reason that we only, part of the reason, at least how I knew it was to only have ten, was so that we could kind of measure and see what the community accepted or didn't want. So.
And maybe it's a three-month, six-month, nine-month check-in with all the license applicants of how, whether they built it or not, how are things going?
Yeah, you said they're following the commercial standards for fencing, right?
No, all I'm saying is that the staff's interpretation of effective screening is consistent across the entire.
Well, there, there is that too. There, there's been, Linda just brought up the fact that some of them are, you know, the fact that it's so late in the season to get, to get this going, that, that it wouldn't, they couldn't sustain it over the winter. I have, it comes to think about it, I have, I have talked to, uh, one resident in particular. It's like, I got to get moving on this because otherwise it's not going to happen before winter.
It won't.
You know, and I, and I, I, maybe should, can we agree that maybe, okay, we've had it in place for thirty days and that we encourage any resident that has questions, comments, concerns to contact us at the village with those concerns individually, right? So we can work with you on a case-by-case basis. And then can we set a, you know, a calendar reminder that in three months of the date, we check in with these residents? Is that, is that fair? Or would you prefer that Josh does that tomorrow? I mean, I think.
It doesn't matter to me. I'm, I'm just more concerned that staff is applying commercial standards to fencing.
No, he, the interpretation of what screening is.
Yes.
As I said, it could be a bush. Just, it's to block it.
But as long as staff understands it can be a bush or, and not a solid fence or a chain link fence with slats.
It doesn't have to be shrubbery all the way around six feet. Because where are you going to find that?
You would have to plant your landscaping such that it's at least six feet tall consistently and.
And what's the, and what's the leeway on that? If it's a shrub that's five feet, will grow to six?
Well, it'll grow to six, sooner or later.
Or is it the time, at the time of planting?
We've told them that it needs to be six feet at the time of planting to be compliant with the code.
But you can't buy that unless you're buying like arbor by, which will block all of the wind and therefore make it an unhealthy situation.
That's, I don't, I don't, I, I've had chickens and arbor by is not going to, um, provide, uh, what do you call? Uh, like a solid enough block to affect the, the health of a chicken.
Also said that the.
If it's around all sides?
Yeah, it would be fine.
Not, well, you're not going to screen the side that your house can see. You're screening three sides of.
At most, at most.
So when chickens are inside in the winter, I mean, we had them not in a small coop situation. Um, but some of the venting on those coops, you know, they have to stay warm in the winter.
Right.
Um, but you still do have to have ventilation. They're really small. The vents are very small. So an arbor by is, you know, it's all open at the top. There's going to be some airflow in there. It's not going to be restricted without, to harm the chickens.
Because it depends on how close it has to be to enclosure.
And there's that to.
You know, when you're looking at, you know, where your neighbors can see, I mean, how close does it have to be to the enclosure or to.
I think it would be where you decide to place it on your property as well.
Let's say you put it right in the middle of your backyard. Does it need to be right here? Or if it's on your property, then your neighbor is obviously going to be in their second floor window looking down and go, oh my God, I can see chickens.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
If they look on the second floor, that they need to buy a plan.
Sure, dip.
But there's a definition for that too.
Yeah, so it's, effective screening doesn't mean that if your neighbor's property is, the definition of effective screening includes that it's six feet or more. So if you have a six-foot fence that blocks it, it's considered effective screening whether or not your neighbor is in there, on the roof or has a higher patio.
Our ordinance also does require a minimum hundred square foot area around the chickens itself. So your screening is going to be a minimum hundred square feet away from coop, minimum.
Yes.
So there's no airflow, there's no, you're not dropping air, right?
Okay, so, so we've had a lot of discussion and it's been, and it's been great. And I appreciate everyone's input. I just need some, we need some action items for staff and then how we're going to deal with this, these concerns, right? So what I'm hearing is we want the staff to reach out to licensed applicants that have not moved forward. At what time? At what time interval? Do they want it to be this week? Do you want it to be, and if it's already been thirty days? You know, again, I hate to sound like the TV, the supply chain issues. Maybe they ordered the coop, the coop's not in, but.
As a part of the program, there needs to be a feedback cycle.
Sure.
There needs to be a way to recollect feedback from those ten. But that timing and interpretation is, I don't really care about. What I care about is that we do intervals throughout this year so that next year, when we reevaluate, as we said we would do, we have direct feedback from the ten that picked up the licenses as to either why they did do it, didn't do it, what they thought of it if they did it, how they felt about the ordinances, so that we can adjust based on that feedback. That's, that's part of a pilot program.
I like your interval of three, six, nine.
Yeah, return the license if they choose that they're not going to move forward so that somebody else can step forward.
It's a more comfortable.
Do we have a process to return the licenses if they're not going to move forward?
Yeah, to renew it every year.
But I mean, but let's say somebody has decided, okay.
I've already, I don't know, call this mayor authority, call, call it me overstepping, whatever. I've already made clear to Mr. Hedges that if somebody had an issue with the license and didn't want to use said license, we'd give them back the twenty bucks. I'll give it to them.
Okay, but.
Okay, like, like, that, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, the license.
Why have all just done this conversation?
The license, the, the license is for, the license, we have ten homes. If you have a permit and you don't want to use it, you want to give it to somebody else or it was too much for you to undertake, fine with it. We'll, we'll give them the twenty bucks. Like, it would be serious. I mean, it's, that they didn't.
But you have some that have already said that they did it so that there was one less license.
No, no, no. I, no, they did it because they wanted it, but their wife doesn't.
Okay, I thought you said one had got it so.
I think as, as, as president of the village, I think you should, uh, select a committee to handle this.
Public works.
And I would recommend Mr. Kelly, uh, quickly, he's three, six, nine. I think that would be the issue.
No. Do you want to have a, uh?
Oh, PR would be good. I think it should be a committee, a committee handle this and go through all the rigmarole. We'll bring back to the board a recommendation.
We should create an ad hoc committee for this. Doesn't matter. So who wants to do it?
Um, Mr. Go. No. Eric's not here, I think.
Uh, uh, Mr. Ray, you're keeping, you're keeping, uh, notes. Let's, let's put it on the agenda for next meeting to discuss the creation of a ad hoc committee for this purpose. Okay, so think about how you guys want to be involved and we'll go forward with that.
So does that mean that staff will not be contacted?
Not right away.
Okay.
Okay.
Not right away. I agree with the intervals. I agree with all of it. But if we wanted, if, if trustee Coath, trustee Coath is on this committee, whether he wants or not, it's his recommendation. And, uh, he doesn't have to be chairman, but he needs to be involved.
Hundred square feet, huh? Going to make the coop a quarter acre.
All right.
One other thing. Um, the, the director for the Park District, no, has no knowledge of anyone spraying. I have no knowledge of anyone spraying. And the, the four, uh, boy scout slash cub scout dads that kind of run all that back there know nothing about spraying.
So we have a rogue spraying.
So if you got a picture of the guy.
I don't have a picture of the guy. I don't have a picture of the truck. I have pictures of plants because that's what I take pictures of.
How do you know the, the dog didn't pee on a plant and kill it?
Because I saw a man spraying stuff and I stopped and talked to him and my dog doesn't speak English. So I know. He was busy over there sniffing.
I think you need to work with the chief and he can, he's a good sketch artist. You know, the sketches you see on the news, they go.
Yeah, stick figure.
I, I am working on.
So nobody at the Park District authorized anyone to do anything back there.
So the only other possibility would be the, some of you spray. The Tuscan.
HOA?
HOA.
The HOA would have went back there and saw the campsites and the big pavilion. Yeah, they could have, but.
Because they're already spraying the grass by the plants and they're not supposed to. Because it runs down.
Uh, it depends what they're spraying. Hmm, so there, there, there's an elk site company in Eli, Minnesota that sells products you can purchase over, uh, the website. You can spray and you can kill different varieties of weeds without hurting fish or harmful water, the whole shot. I've used them for dead meat. So I don't know what they're spraying.
Um, I, I would think that, I would think if you have a concern and nobody knows what it is, I would say give it to staff or chief if you think it's.
God, what time was it?
I do think it's a, it's a big concern of somebody spraying. Calls in an open, public area, so he has no over there.
It's, it's killed off vegetation that shouldn't have been touched.
Well, they have cameras over there too, no?
No. We're left to be at the lecture.
Sure. All right, do we have any other new business or other announcements this evening?